Okay. Call to order, the planning board meeting, February 21st, June 22nd, at 5:01 PM. Uh, I guess we can do it in minutes.
What, you can do it? Oh, no, can't do it in minutes. I'll make a reservation for next time.
Okay.
Save yours for next time, Jason.
Okay. Are we good?
Any correspondence clear? You want us to go over?
I don't think we'll see that. Correspondence. No, just nothing worth connection.
So approve the C and D.
Yeah.
Now, if we're finally able to make a motion.
For me to sign.
So which one you need to move up? Before you sign that one, are they sticking up in the other?
Here's the other copy.
Oh, I see, the drawings go with them. Okay, so, I'll make a motion for Bob to sign the site plan approval for Alan Borguard, AJ's auto body, as written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. I'm gonna take those. Actually, I'll end up taking the whole folder.
Oh, do you want the folder or just those?
Well, when I leave, I'll take, I'll take the whole.
Oh, that whole folder?
Everything.
Okay. Next item. The site plan approval for pole trains. Four, six, comma, Enrour Ave., West Street, West State Street, Granby, Mass. Somebody like to make a motion?
You want to do it this time?
I'll make a motion to, uh, Bob sign the site plan approval for pole trains, Inc., 315 Abley Street, South Abley, as, as written.
My second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Oh, we can do the minutes.
We'll just put those in here, uh?
Well, give me them, give them to me please, and I will.
Well, we'll just do that. Hi, Nita.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Okay, 5:05. Right on schedule. Mr. Alfred Detour. How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
He's technically a part of 15.
He's what?
He's technically a part of 15.
Now, can you kind of come up and show the board what's going on here? Personally, I think everything was going on in Belchertown.
Well, it is. So this is 1202, right, 1202, so this is the, uh, the Delaware rule and a consent protocol here. And this was P. And what I want to do, my sister lives here. And what we're gonna do is, they, uh, my parents' house, she lives over here. I actually live over here. And I'm gonna split this with my, uh, this, with my sister. This goes to me, and this becomes hers. This.
And Momma and Dad's house stays?
Yeah, that's remaining land.
Yeah.
That's just remaining land. The problem was, I wanted to split it on a line. Apparently, we can't make up our mind where the line is.
Oh, the Granby-Belchertown line, you mean?
Right. And so, when this survey, I had the survey done, this is when it came up with the line. And so, that puts this little useless piece right here, which is non, it's non-buildable. Uh, it's all in the, over here. That puts that into Granby. Everything else is in Granby. And so, that's why.
Also, we're only interested in this little piece here.
Yeah, it's like, it's like a quarter acre or something, I forget.
Yeah, 11,000 square feet.
Yeah. And I thought I was, you know, I thought the line, see, town line per, there's different town lines.
Sure.
Uh, they've never really, but this is the new one, or, or another one. And that's how.
Yeah, it's the third.
Yes. And so, that's how it ended up, and that's, you know, that's why I made, now, I've gotten the Belchertown signatures. They require one milar and the four copies.
Yeah.
And you require two milars, so I have the other, just another one of those four. Uh, but that's all it's for.
So you're, this becomes two, then?
This is the electric company.
As far as we're concerned?
I think what Will is meaning to say is, all this property to here, except for your sister's lot, is considered one big piece.
Yes, there is a now.
It's being divided.
This here is electric company. There's lines that go to the, and over here. And yes, that's right.
So you're carving off, uh, how much is it here?
11,000 square feet.
Oh, in the tiny print, okay. 11,000 square feet. To add to the Belchertown side.
Well, that would cost him too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's not, it's not anything, it's just that that's the reason I have to come here, that because it's, for the lines.
Yeah.
We don't plan on doing anything of it.
Is this wooded, or is it?
Yeah, there's actually a house over here. And so, this, and this is actually an easement, because of the lines.
Yeah.
So, so this was the remaining land when we did this up.
I don't see any issue, do you?
I see no issue at all, I'm just wondering, on this, I guess we gotta charge a fee, right?
It's one lot, and we have the two now.
Yeah.
So that's $250. Did you already pay Kathy any money?
No.
Okay.
No, I said, uh, I have to, uh.
Did you bring a checkbook?
Yeah.
That's the important part. Okay, if you want to write out a check for, to the town of Granby for $250.
Okay.
Meantime, we can get this signed, however, I think you're gonna need this stamp on here.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Which one?
Can you put it with it? This is Granby down here.
I may still put it right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, well, that's up to you. I know, I don't know if, I don't think Belchert, maybe they signed the other ones, I'm not sure. I don't know what the four copies are for, I know they signed the one.
Well, we have four copies.
Or, here it is, right here.
I know.
This is what they did.
Oh, okay.
So they, uh, yeah, that's that part.
Yeah, we just need this saying, no determination has been made as to the buildability of any lot shown on this plan. We're not attesting for that. And usually, it's in the wording here.
Yeah, and I think that's in the plans, that was, that it was not, that, um, says it's not gonna, it's not.
Not buildable. Do you want to just leave it at that, or?
We can.
Then we don't have to.
In that way, the registry isn't wondering, how come it's on here? Yeah. Make it easy.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to start?
Does somebody want to make a motion?
Oh. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the A and R presented by Alfred Detour.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Should we just sign it now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, do you want, you have your pen there? Or do you just?
I guess somebody can start with paper copies, or start with.
Okay. Why don't we go over there? Do you want that one, or do you want this?
Which one is?
I'll like punch you in the head with this.
Yeah, everybody should sign, so, okay, so.
Will's on the second. Will, you're signing the second line?
Okay. I'll sign the second one.
Yeah. Nita, sign the fourth line. Oh, no, I didn't, thank you. Yes.
Now, do I, do you know, did I bring that back? Because I have to go through the wire, and I have to do all that, but, uh, the registry and all that.
Will you? What does Mr. Detour leave with us? One milar? And that's it? We, or no? And you keep four, he keeps the four paper copies and one milar?
No, that will be in the party.
Oh, okay. So, Mr. Detour will leave with one milar?
Do you need, or do you need this one with the both?
No, you can sign it all.
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah, that you're gonna use.
Oh, I thought you said, I need two of them.
Okay, you want to sign over here?
Yeah. Oh, Al's got that one, you didn't take that one out?
This one's got the Belchertown on it, too.
Oh, that's true. That's all set, then? That's all, four.
We can record your. Thank you for the check, the town pension. One copy with the planning board, and one copy with the town clerk. Okay, so, I've got to take these over to the town clerk?
Okay.
And she'll record them.
So that was all I needed, I did everything right on those papers there?
You did. Do you, do you have this, though, on there? Where, how it's recorded? Does it say on the plan?
Which, I didn't know, do they make, I didn't know that. It may, it may say that.
What's that?
How it's recorded in the?
No, they will, registry deeds will give it a book and a page.
Okay, 'cause it doesn't have that now?
Right.
But the original plot does, which is what should be on here.
There is a book number here, but it may, I don't know if that's the one we're looking
There you go, pen there. It's gotta be over on, no, sorry. Owners, is this, which part does this one go?
Let's see, electric company.
The deed book, what? This is parcel two.
I would think that that, can I see that, please?
Oh, it might be this one.
'Cause that's all considered parcel two, all the way over?
Well, this whole thing was one, I think this was the whole, my sister and I both own all this right now.
Can, can you make heads or tails? Are we supposed to have the book and the page number here?
It's good. Uh, there probably is some of that.
Right here? He's going from here to here.
But see, the only part we're concerned about is the little corner down there, because that's in Granby.
But that's still part of this parcel two.
Yeah, it should be this one. This large parcel with two parcels.
Parcel two, so that's noted here. Parcel two, blah, 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 deeded book 12.
Yeah, I would say that this is the original, 'cause this is the original parcel.
Oh, so, border break, two, yeah, it's the same.
Okay, you want to fill that out? Yeah? Oh, wait a minute.
You can use that.
Yeah.
So.
Page 263. No.
Oh. 263.
Yep. On both copies. And then life will be good. Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Now, everybody signed all of these? Okay, Mr. Bob, you know how it all goes up.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Take care. I'm gonna take this, you have minutes there, right?
Okay. Next order of business. Mr. Nugent.
Yes, sir, how are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm okay.
That's good.
Did you sign in, by the way?
We did, yes.
You are good, okay. Oh, yeah, please, pardon me, I'm like, just reaching in front of you.
Okay. So, four things have happened. Time, time back, I made this into a flag lot, that's where my house is. When doing so, one of the problems that I went running to as I get older is that they put the property line through the, you know, property line through the corner of the barn.
Right.
So that's one of the corrections. The other is, is the three lots here that I want to create, this is all one lot now.
So we are, to sum it up real quick, this is where the old restaurant was, is now daycare.
Our problem is, is when we get insurance for this property, they kill me on the insurance because of the, uh, daycare.
Uh-huh.
And they keep coming back, if it was a property of its own, it would be much easier to get insurance. So that's really what started this. But if I want to do this, as I've gotten older, it's an opportunity to just divide.
Divide it all.
Right.
So you're dividing one into three there, right?
Correct. And correcting the fourth one.
And we have this here, too. The old line ran through the, the old barn, or through the barns, and now he's making this.
So that comes off of this one?
Correct.
Right.
So that's four?
Correct.
Did you already give Kathy a check?
Uh, I don't think I did. I don't think money was even mentioned, except.
So let's see, that's 120, five times four. Did you?
Did you take debit card? Debit card? I can run a check, I know she's not in today, or wasn't in today, so I can run a check over tomorrow, but no, no money was mentioned by her.
Ah, okay.
So that's fine, that's not a problem.
Um.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
Could you run home and get a check and bring it back?
Do you have a check in your, in your trunk? I don't believe I do. Yeah, like, I can, I can run home quick and grab one.
If you would. And that way, we can close everything out.
Yeah.
We've done, it's complete.
Sure, yep. You can hang out here? Yeah.
Okay. So, in the meantime, we can go ahead with this.
Well.
We're all tailored, shoot it, this is not one of them.
You'll more fresh turkey, man, so if you look out right here, you can see it, the house on the hill through the, through here, is this house?
Oh, yeah.
And then the lower property where, uh, both of that soup daycares.
Okay. That's where, right there? Okay.
Okay, so we got all the frontages.
Yeah.
We got the square footage.
So is that, right now, is it one lot going into four pieces?
It's one lot. I don't know, I want to think.
Is this all one big thing right now?
No, so there's two lots here. But we're just altering a property line, 'cause it goes through the building.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just altering this lot, downsizing it a little bit, and giving whatever footage this is to this lot.
And then creating?
Three lots.
Three lots.
So this is one lot, creating three. You trying to save me $125?
No, no, my, my train of thought was to make you spend another $120.
I'm gonna treat dinner and a bottle of wine.
Does anybody have any other questions from Mr. Nugent?
No. It's pretty straightforward. Does it have the not buildable over there somewhere?
No determination has been made as to the buildability of any lot shown on this plan.
All righty.
So what does that mean?
Right.
Just a disclaimer.
Oh.
For the plan.
So how you came back and wanted to build a house here?
We're not saying that you can.
Or you can't. It's under term at this point.
So there's no. Part test everything else.
There's no outbuildings, there's no structures on this property here?
So there's, there's, there's an old restaurant, a daycare, this is the barn, that was once part of the farm. Pictures of all turkey farm. Your old farmhouse. Uh, these are the three poultry buildings, and this was a grain shed.
Any other questions? Do we hear a motion?
I approve.
Okay, Jason, go for it.
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, A and R for Kevin.
I can fill in our portion.
How you for Kevin?
I work for the planning.
Do I have a second?
That's for the town.
I'll second.
I support the planning.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's $500. Right?
Yes.
For the, for the mathematically challenged.
So does the diamond, I'm just curious, guys, I don't know, does that mean there's not a structure there?
This is driveway.
No, I mean like.
Uh, what are they showing here? Oh, they're showing the, the driveways.
These are the, all the access roads into each and right.
Oh, okay.
And these are islands of grass.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay, good. I just, I just want to know, I said, Lauren.
That's good. That's why we ask questions.
Actually, we can just pass these along.
Want to take him down the other end, and? You have a pen? Only this one for the other. Yeah, he's using the one we would use on paper, and this is the one for the milars.
You want the one for paper?
Faster, faster.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Jason, what line are you starting on?
Um, sorry, I'm down here, the second.
Aye, okay. Number two, man. Look at, I don't have a big name. My fingers wouldn't, wouldn't make it. Yeah, and he's back.
He's quick.
Did you break speed limits all the way? Oh, okay, let me come down there.
Okay, so these are all signed. Kevin, you got one of these?
Very good.
And the check, when you tell you, it's a self-charge.
Does our business conclude?
I still believe you.
Are they done?
Is this, or are we done? You are.
You are free to, please, will we sign like?
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll see, guys.
This one, we don't have a lot of data. Unless we, unless we do an enter.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Thank you. I guess this one, I guess. Need a clip or anything, or?
I'm sorry? Nope, I'm good.
Ah.
Jason, sorry.
We have a supply somewhere.
There's a whole bag in there. Oh, there.
In the...
Right there.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Now, you want to do the minutes? Okay, um... Thank you. So, did I steal your minutes? Who's gonna do those now? I did.
Has everybody reviewed the minutes for...
It is a little...
October 25th, 2021.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for Mon, Monday, October 25th, 2021, as written.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain.
No words.
You had a change for the next one?
Right. For February 14th, 2022, minutes, uh...
Page two?
Page two, center of the page. Just a typo. Instead of GWD, it's supposed to be GVW.
Can you see it? First...
That's the only correction I have. Do we hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, February 14th, 2022, with the correction of changing GWV for GVW on page two.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
And I abstain. You can do the accident items if you want, it's, I'll clean them up.
Okay, uh, Creed Site Plan approval for Poltrains Inc., Ken, who's responsible, done.
Aye.
Same for Alan Beauregard, that's done. Put together all bylaws and article changes discussed for the board to review as separate articles. Pending.
You want to put pending on that one? Okay, because he did send them, we just haven't discussed them yet. And that's it?
Right. Okay.
Wow, clipping right along. What is this draft memo to Select Board reside, uh... Oh, well, that would be if we're discussing the zoning. Are we doing that?
Do we want to do some of it?
It's up to the board. Um, the conversation still is out there on when to schedule a public hearing. Considering the town meeting is scheduled for May 8th.
I'm sorry?
The, the town meeting is scheduled for May 8th. So the board would need to, within the month of March, hold a, at least open the public hearing, um, and presumably close it. So, um... Since we have to notify and, and do that process of notification to the community, the board can maybe take a look these next two meetings and then schedule the public hearings for the last meeting in March, um, if that is what the board wants to do. Um, and then, you know, workshop or talk about however they want to, you know, these next two meetings. I don't know what the, there's nothing on the agenda for the next meeting, there's no public hearing items.
Do you have one of these? One of your submissions you're talking about? Do you have a copy?
It's not this.
I have a, I have a virtual copy of what I...
I'll tell you why. Why don't we... Why don't we start off by working through the, um, for a little while, the, uh...
The changes?
The changes. The private event venue line.
So there were no changes based on what was originally the board reviewed last year? So this is being presented again, um, for some considerations. I did send the board, and I, I apologize that you didn't, you probably are not remembering what I sent the board, but there was a document that I had some additional considerations since the last, since we last talked about this. There were some additional considerations that could either be conditioned in an, in an approval of a special permit, or as additional standards for approval. In addition to what is suggested in this bylaw, or... Let me see, I think I have that document.
I don't have my papers on that here, I looked at them.
At least read some of the, the conditions that...
Do you remember seeing those? He had sent a while back to us. Oh, you brought them all that way?
I have a lot of them.
You do? Yeah, he sent us some suggested changes from some other towns.
I actually, I think I have a paper copy.
Minor at home.
I think I have printed them with the thought that we were going to be discussing it at a previous meeting.
Oh, so you do have copies there?
So I was somewhat prepared. I didn't know that I have the same folder with me.
Ah.
So I actually have that. This was shared with the board, um...
Ah, yes.
A couple of months ago. And that's specific to the, um, and there, it, it wouldn't be presented in this particular memo because we haven't talked about it. And this, again, is a draft to the Select Board when the, when the planning board is, you know, more ready to present something to the Select Board. But what I will say is that... There were some additional considerations that I think the board was talking about with regards to buffering, an additional larger buffer. That was something that we were going off and on about with regards to how far from the right way the activity had to be happening. Additionally, encouraging that the language include that signage and lighting shall comply with the underlying zoning, or with the, with the zoning code. Also stating that there would be additional permits that may be required depending on the type of private event that would happen there.
Should that be, um, um, other permits from other departments?
Yeah.
Otherwise, they're going to be looking forward from us.
And then I think one of the bigger items was spelling out the, in an application permit or within the presentation to the board, um, a thought about what type of programming would be there year-round, um, if it happened to be, um, special expeditions or any sort of agriculturally related events on that property. And then, um, what would be included in the application are these other items, um...
Should we say location of restroom facilities?
Yep.
I mean, otherwise they'll just say yes or no.
So that would be presented like in a regular site plan. I think the important thing to, to note would be that if an applicant were to come in, similar to, um, I think if, uh, how you would, and I don't know if, if Grammy or the planning board would ever oversee, um, or has in the past, um, any sort of agricultural event that may be a one-time thing. Um, is the expectation that that applicant, if they're having a different type of event that they had the previous week, that they would need to come to the planning board every time they had a different event? Is the thought that you know that based on this bylaw, this proposed, this, proposed bylaw, that there would be an expectation that the type of programming that is outlined within the narrative, within the application process of where you're proposed, restroom facilities would be trash, um, methods of disposal, if that in itself is sufficient for the approval of this particular parcel to be used as a special event, uh, private event venue. So those, I mean, those are, those are questions, additional questions that I think have come to the forefront since we last talked about this. Does the parcel size have to be larger than 10 acres?
So, under the general requirements, you've got private event venues should have adequate water and wastewater facilities, either permanent or temporary approved by the Grammy Board of Health. Are you kind of saying it all over again in this other one?
Um, yeah.
Or should this other one be a...
It would probably remove that, um, from that other list of considerations.
Okay, should that be a form for them to fill out?
I think that, you know, if the, if the town were to adopt this bylaw, that we would probably have some sort of special form for this type of special permit. But this suggests, and this is the question that, or the, the conversation that I was closing prior, was that... In general, if this particular piece of property were granted a special permit by the planning board, um, that presumably whatever is listed in their narrative, in their permit application, in, um, in their description to the board for what they want to use that property for, would be covered by that, and the planning board would be acting on that. I think generally, if there happens to be temporary restroom facilities or any sort of things that have to be reviewed by another entity like the Board of Health, um, that they would need to get that on their own for that specific event. But that wouldn't hold up any approval that the planning board would have previously given to that particular piece of land.
Should we put that in there about, you know, see Board of Health or something like that, or, because the Board of Health is going to look at this and saying, you're trying to do our job?
With regards to...
Anything that they would, uh, the restroom facilities, that would be theirs, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, the question is whether or not you want to spell each individual responsibility by each board or authority out, or as, you know, was previously, as, you know, we were walking through, Will, we were talking about how there would be a requirement for other permits to be issued if that needed to happen, um, and then spell out, um, that it would be other permits from other departments, or approvals from other departments depending on what type of event.
Okay, so that's, that's under other permits from other departments, maybe, yeah, that's covered there.
I, I think, personally, that, uh, we have to kind of paint this one with a broad brush. It's new territory, as, as we did with the marijuana bylaws. We've never done it before. And we may have to... We got to try to dot our i's, cross our t's, which I think Ken has done here. And, um, the planning board will just have to address if there are situations that arise and the bylaw may have to be changed in the future.
Um, okay, I, I agree with that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think as, as you, you've, um, identified, it's one of those things, too, where in the public hearing process, if there are certain conditions that are not covered within the criteria here, the planning board has every right to add conditions of approval. And then address any bylaw amendments if it, you know, happens to be coming up as an issue.
Couple of questions, the buffering around activity, we don't say how much. Uh, you know, any feet, so many feet, or what have you, and what kind, so that...
I, yeah, I think that's a, that's a conversation for the board. I, what I initially, I think what I recall from our public hearing in, was it 20, 2020? 2020?
Yeah, 20, yeah.
2020?
Or 2019, maybe.
It was, yeah, it was a virtual public hearing.
It's a while ago.
That it was initially 200 feet, um, from the right of way, um, on all side, all right, well, 200 feet from all sides, uh, property lines. Um, is that something that the board, you know, is it more so that you don't want to see the activity from the street, from the neighbors? Obviously, their site plan would show where they want the certain activities to happen. And through that conversation with the board, you know, the board can dictate where that happens and how it occurs.
So we could say by a, you said we had 200 feet?
That was initially what I had suggested.
So we could say 200-foot buffer shall be provided on all sides, not abutting of public roadway? That would make sense there. I don't know if 200 is the right number, but it's just putting a number there.
That's a lot, 200.
Mm-hmm.
It is.
Well, if you're a neighbor, you'd want a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, it's also a requirement of 10 acres to, to even...
Yeah, you have to have 10 acres to start off.
Or permit.
That's the, and the other thing is, people are going to look at this really quickly and say, well, if I want to have, and I think this was brought up, if I want to have a graduation party, do I have to go through all this?
My simple answer would be no. Because that's a private, well, I guess this is private, too. And it's not a business running.
Right.
Yeah. Or I'm not a business having a, a graduation party for my daughter, I should say.
So maybe we just could change to private event venue, saying, put some lighting in there, saying it's a business so that people know and don't take reviews lightly?
I don't know if it would go there. A private event is an event that is periodically, blah, 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 guest in attendance, and not open to the public.
Right, let's say it's a business.
We're also monitoring it, so.
Or, you know.
I think it's, I think it's implied that a business entity or the property owner who would be applying for this particular permit or this special permit by the planning board would be operating the property with the intention of renting the property to, to do the various business activities that, that are listed there.
Yeah, it says here on a commercial basis, so I don't know, you're saying put it in the title there?
I don't know, I mean, right, as a venue, it talks about on a commercial basis. I guess it'd be fine. Unless there's somebody who wants to be a company, and it's like, oh, you can't have these events, look here, the bylaws, this and that, and then, I don't know.
And that's just that we don't know what we're getting ourselves into...
Yeah.
With this whole thing. And as Ken has said, we can use the, uh... And as Ken has said, we can use the, uh, public hearing to gauge the sentiments of, of our constituents.
I guess under private event, you could also not open to the public an admission of being charged or something like this.
Well, it does say that here.
To private parties, not open to the public, it says under private event.
Right. But that could be anyway, you could invite a couple of your, your family members, not open to the public, but it's just, right? I'm just thinking about neighbors that, I'm just, you know.
How are you thinking about it?
If I can make a suggestion to the board, all the points are valid, but it's, you know, are we tripping one and catching the other and everything? I, I would make a recommendation that we move forward with it as written. We've, we get the, the general public input.
With these things that he?
Yes.
Okay, so addition of the ones you suggested?
Right, including on the back of the page.
And then have the public hearing?
Have the public hearing.
Get the feedback and then clean it up.
Right. You know, before we, like when we were talking about the business district up Pleasant Street and East and spent a lot of time in there, that got shut down quick. And we can fine tune it.
That sound okay to you, Ken?
That sounds great. So what I will do with this particular bylaw is amend it within the memo to send to the select board. The select board should be reviewing that prior to the planning board holding its public hearing. I think for the purposes of just ensuring we're on some sort of timeline, my suggestion is to have the second March meeting as the public hearing date for all three of these, um, items. If the planning board wants to workshop or discuss the other two, or you want to do that tonight, I mean, I, the, the only thing is I need to have the ample time to advertise for the.
So that would be the 28th of March?
Right, the 14th to the 28th.
Does that work for you?
Well, the 14th, actually, is it possible that we do the 15th, I think it's around the 14th? It should be fine, but.
But Ken was just talking about reviewing it, the 28th.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just, I'm just wondering about the 14th anyway.
So the 14th, you're not available for the planning board?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the discussion.
I don't think we're going to have anything. Anything big.
No.
And actually, the 14th, now that we dropped that up, I'm going to be out of town that week as well.
You're going to be out of town that, a week?
So that's going to rely on Will, myself, and Jim.
Jim, um, is Jim going to be around?
Well, let's just plan on having the meeting, I mean, if there's nothing to do.
Well, we don't, assuming Jim will be here, that'll be a forum, if he's not, we don't have.
Right, but what I would like to do is schedule the meeting. And that way, if there is some residual stuff happening, we can take care of that on the 14th and not have it get pushed off to the 28th, where all of a sudden the agenda becomes so large
Right.
that we're inundated with stuff. And I'm not, I'm not anticipating we would be.
Assuming we have three people.
That is correct.
We already know we won't have two.
Right.
So Jim's on the hot spot.
Right.
Yeah, because the next day, I believe, is usually conservation meets or something, so we'd have a trouble finding a place to meet. Okay, so 28th then for the public hearing.
Is that what we said? 28th for the public hearing?
It's the second, it's the second March, second meeting in March.
Yes.
So it'll be the 28th.
So are you going on to the next?
Well, I'd like to discuss that this evening and give the go-ahead. Well, we have to blow down this private event thing, don't we? Do we have to blow it out?
No, your, your recommendation will be at the meeting on the 28th. This was a, a good point to just, just.
It's kind of like a workshop now.
Yeah, it's workshopping it, having, you know, the discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, on the 28th as well, do the, the solar and whatever other.
The solar's the first part there. Right, and, and we just, we're on the second one, and he's talked about those, so we're going to add those in. And now we're on to the third one, right? Am I brushing?
Well, the solar, the first page. And we're just going to, uh, and Ken correct, if I'm wrong, we're just going to put in the, uh, the word, the verbiage
Yeah.
that the Massachussetts general laws have.
Right.
But I think Ken was saying too, a lot of towns have actually decided not to include that language in their bylaws. Was that Ken? He said he knows some towns or you?
I haven't, no, I, I know some towns that, um, I don't think it was related to the SMART program. Again, this particular bylaw is a suggestion from the property owner in which wanted to develop this particular prop, um, item with the previous town bylaw, or zoning bylaw amendment to the solar bylaw. That was done prior to the, the new adoption of the SMART regulations, which included these benefits for those, um, that could utilize those properties and get, um, those SMART credits.
Following the SMART guidelines.
Right.
Yes.
I, I'm not familiar with any particular communities that have adopted and prohibited more the ability to develop solar, um, other than that. So if, if the planning, or if the town would not adopt that, it is a benefit to those that have those properties and could benefit from the credits that the state is providing them. The town would not allow them to develop if they didn't adopt, if, if this bylaw was not passed.
And this is just for the one that wants to plant under solar panels?
Yes. It, it's, um, to develop solar, ground-mounted solar in these particular lands because they are operating.
Unless they are agricultural solar tariff generating units. That's the only thing that will.
Yes, so.
We'd kind of need a definition of the agricultural solar tariff generating units.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe in our definitions.
Yes, I will add that. There's a, there's a state.
Cause it's saying no large ground mounted. Then it says unless you're doing this, so what is that that is so special that lets them do it, especially on prime agricultural land, which this particular one is?
Um, let me read that, I just found what that definition is.
I think I know what it is, but I don't think I can explain it. One of those.
And what I can suggest too is that, um, because I have been getting emails and Kathy has been getting emails from the property owner that is curious about this particular bylaw, um, is ensure that they're present if there are questions from the board, additional questions from the board. Yeah, there's a lot of language here, I don't think it's, it's as easy as trying to, you know, there's a whole.
Right, I'm sure at the town meeting, you might get questions about what, what, what's.
I, yeah, I just know that it's related to the credit that the state provides, um, to develop solar. And with regards to agriculture, there is a component of the property being used for, for agricultural purposes, like similar to section three of chapter 48 where the town, you know, when it's an agricultural use shouldn't, or wouldn't be necessarily regulating certain agricultural uses. So this is somewhat related, um, but I can definitely find the definition.
Yeah, just so we can.
It's not, it's not, they're doing something, they have to do something agricultural, and they, they're being like those huge, hugely ugly structures.
They would need, they would be needing to use their property currently for agricultural purposes as defined by the state.
And they need to keep.
Is it that property that has all the solar on it, or is it just like they have chickens on one side?
No, it has to be.
There would be a definition that they would need to, um, you know, ensure that, because they would need to demonstrate that to the state to get those credentials for the solar development.
I mean, those credentials are a benefit to them, doesn't benefit to the town in any way, just benefits the, the property owner?
Just the town, just the property.
Property owner.
Yep.
Yeah, it was, it, it's a benefit to the person develop, or the entity developing solar.
Okay. I have a question on the next one. Are we all, are we all set with that one?
Yeah, 6.34.
Yeah, why are we even changing anything here?
So I think, um, this conversation came up with regards to looking at the site plan approval process. Because currently it's being, the process is being, the process employs the special permits process from the chapter 48. So, um, the suggestion was to clarify some of the language to create a distinct separate process. Particularly the process of, um, notification, I mean, you're still notifying? Under a regular site plan approval, if you didn't adopt the process that you're currently using for site plan approval, you wouldn't need to notify your abutters. The town would still be doing that under this process. But it also, what happens with regards to site plan approvals is that then you're requiring, um, a public notice, you're requiring all of those particular, um, public notification requirements under Mass General Law, under, which could be more efficient because it's an allowed use in a site plan, presumably, right?
Yep.
That, yeah. I think, yeah, I think that was, that was a suggestion from the chair to look at language regarding the procedures of site plan approval. And this is specific to, the, the language that's presented here is specific to just trying to clarify a process that, um, relies on chapter 48, section nine, rather than the town's own procedure.
Okay, I'm totally confused. So this is to try and not have as much public hearings as we've had? I would assume that if there's a abutters, you'd have to have public hearings, and nine times out of 10, I don't know if I can even think of one where there isn't any abutter that you need to notify.
So, this creates a process where the planning board would need to adopt rules and regulations for site plan approval, which could include the ability to create a process to notify abutters. If you look at 6.3.4, which is number one, so where the language is very specific for special permits, it's required of a public hearing. The site plan review is, is a public meeting, so it's a public meeting item. It doesn't have to go through a specific two and a half week process to get the application before the board, schedule your public hearing. You could presumably create a process through your rules and regulations or through a policy where the Friday before, not necessarily Friday, but a week before the meeting, all the materials are given. You can still employ review through your, um, town offices and town departments. But at least here, the application, assuming that it's complete at a regular scheduled meeting.
So that wouldn't give the town, that would give the town departments a week, say, in your, in your example there, to respond? Before we even had a meeting and went through it?
If, if that, yeah, if that's the example, it would be a week, but again, the planning board reserves its authority to either act or wait, continue the special permit or the site plan approval item to the next meeting.
So it would be a regular meeting. Abutters would be notified, we're having a regular meeting, but it's your chance to say something. Do they have a chance to say something if it's not a public hearing?
I think, I'm wondering, like, are they changing the way abutters are notified, is it part of the?
Um, no, because the intent, it, it's particularly, I think it's the timing and the scheduling of these particular site plan approvals. The thought is, based on the way that the site plan approval section is written in your bylaw, requires the, it, it employs a special permit process, right? So it could add to two to three to a blunt, um, of extra time in that, um, review process. Knowing that a site plan approval is an allowed use within the district. Obviously, there are certain things and criteria that would need to be talked about and negotiated, maybe some additional landscaping, whatnot. But presumably it's an allowed use, and the planning board should be giving, um, an approval for a site plan.
So it's sort of streamlined, you mean?
Yes. It would, it would add the additional responsibility to the planning board to create a policy or a process to notify abutters, um, and how that would work and how that would look like.
And what's, what's the?
So, I mean, what I could imagine is, um, if the planning board were to adopt a policy that, um, any new agenda items, which could include a site plan approval, were to be on the next agenda, so let's say if you're looking at March 14th, you would probably want an application, you could say by Monday at close of business, an application for site plan approval would need to come into the board. And that would require staff, that would require a board to like really create this efficient process of making sure that, um, those reviews are out and you, you're really on top of that coordination of review for a site plan approval, which again, is an approval that is, because it's an allowed use in a district, that you would be getting that approval. So if that were a policy that the, that the planning board were to adopt, where applications and there would be ample time for review by the board, by the entities, if the, to Lil's point, if the planning board was not satisfied with responses or did not get a response, um, they can, you know, the board reserves the right to continue the meeting, the meeting item to the next meeting or to another date.
So it's basically the same process, but we're not calling it a public hearing, so that leaves out the expense to the applicant of the newspaper.
Right.
Which is a couple of hundred anyway. Which is fine, except for I, I, I'm all for making the process more efficient, but I, I'm not for rushing everything through just to say, hey, look, we got this done in, in record time. record time, and, but we didn't get all these answers from here. Well, too bad, they had a week to respond. That doesn't fly. That's just my foresense.
It's valid. And I know what, what the chair was getting at, again, we'll go back to, this is already allowed.
Right.
It's allowed to happen by our bylaws. And he was trying to think of a way to, or, or we, as a board, are trying to think of a way to streamline the process, okay? And the streamlining of the process, the things that we eliminate is a quote unquote public hearing. We still have a, a butter notice. I think the time of submission of such a plan, that's going to have to be discussed further, because again, I agree with you, Lil, there are some boards, let's take the Board of Health, they meet every two weeks, generally. You know, sometimes they get kicked off, just like we do, conservation once a month. It would be nice if there was, if everybody met kind of on the same schedule. But then we, we can say, okay, we haven't heard from Board of Health, we haven't heard from conservation, we haven't heard from the building inspector, he's been on vacation for two weeks.
Sure.
You know, and continue...
As long as we...
Well, it's not, it's not a, it's not a public hearing, well, continue the item, the item to the next meeting.
And, and I just want to be really clear that even though it's, it's not labeled a public hearing, the public can ask questions, and it can't be the chair here saying, whoever the chair may be at the time, no, you don't, I don't want to listen to you, you know, I don't, and we're not taking any comments. I, I just want to avoid that. I want the people to have the right to ask questions.
Sure.
And I just want to make sure that would happen if it's not called a public hearing.
Yeah.
Because I've seen the other thing happen before.
Yeah, and I, and I think to your point, that, that makes sense. You know, it is the rules and regulations of the planning board, and I think that might be a product that the board may want to, to be looking at for future adoption, which is how a meeting item would be handled, what is that process? It doesn't have to be approved by town meeting, but those are the rules for your board. Um, you know, the chair will call out the public, the chair will identify the members, the public has to talk to the chair in order to communicate with the members, things like that would be handled, as well as who gets notified, you know? Because site plan currently is covered under special permit, um, where it's, what is it, 300 feet right from the property line? You could use the same number.
For notification.
Yeah, for notification, you can use that same number, they have to pull in a abutters list, show that it's part of the application, that is fine. Um, and it would be up to board and/or the applicant to make sure that those notices get out accordingly. But they wouldn't have to pay for a newspaper, um, you know?
Right, which is a big expense. So it's, basically it comes down, they just won't have to pay for a newspaper.
Advertising, right.
Yeah. That's the only big change from doing it one way.
Again, but there would be some additional steps that the planning board would have to take to codify or create those rules. Um, you know, the board can act either through a staff person or, um, the, the members of the board to do the administrative tasks of ensuring that it gets to town staff or, um, those notices get out accordingly. And, and if there's a process for when application or materials get to the, to the board, how they're handled and how they're scheduled. So yes, but I think the biggest difference is no advertising costs, and it spells out, um, that, it replicates pretty much the special permit process without the additional cost of advertising.
Right.
Um, except to the abutters.
And it's just kind of taking out the, in red here, what you've got is the actual timelines, how long it, we have to respond and...
Yeah, and it, it is creating a process, so, for the board.
But that also was telling people how long it takes for us to make a decision and don't expect a snap decision.
Right, yeah.
Because we're waiting on these other things, so I'm not so clear that those should be taken out.
Which?
The red here, where you've got what's in there now about the planning board.
Well, so you mean the, the strike through language?
Yep, the strike through from what's in there now.
Well, I think that it's covered under number two, new number two, with, it changes the timeline. So instead of requiring a public hearing within 65 days, um, the board will have its policy on how it handles planet, uh, site plan review, but the decision must happen within 60 days, rather than 90 days.
Now, question, does not the, does a state under site plan review or approval, um, have guidelines where you have to hold a public hearing?
Site plan approval is not mentioned whatsoever in state law, in the state zoning act.
But the process...
It's presumed that the special permit process would include a site plan approval, but the specificities of a spec, a site plan approval that is not handled by a special permit process, it's, that's why many communities adopt the process that you use for a special permit for that review of a site plan. But it is silent on timelines, on notifications to abutters, and that's why it would be the town's, um, and/or the planning board's responsibility to create those policies for notifying.
So I thought I read that somewhere, but I'll, I'll look. Just to stop me from nagging.
Won't satisfy yourself as well.
That's true, that's true. I can lose sleep over all this.
Don't get that wrong.
And then the final action you're taking out entirely?
Um, yeah, because that's covered in the process, but, um, and, and, on how the board would act, number six, three, four, three, procedure for site plan approval, the board may approve the site plan or approve it with conditions, or deny a site plan if it does not include adequate information.
So it's a majority vote?
Yes.
And the guidelines for making it a majority and not a full board? What determines that?
Um, that's a good question, though, because it's not covered in the state zoning act.
So that's a recent thing.
The only vote is in the state zoning act that is required, um, a super majority is a special permit. Site plan approval, I'm, I'm presuming that because it's an action that, like your other approvals that you provide, like an A and R or your minutes even, that a majority's vote would approve that particular item. Um, and that's what I'm thinking, but I, because site, site plan approval is not mentioned in, um, the state zoning act by itself, that, that is my thought, is that because it's an item, it's a regular meeting item, and in order to approve items, you need a majority vote by Robert's rules, um, order that, that's how, that's why you'd be approving it that way.
I have a question on six point three four, point three. It says contrary to health, safety, and welfare of the public, that they have, basically have to approve it unless it's contrary to health, safety, and welfare of the public. But wouldn't that be something that the board would have to decide? Why would we be deciding on whether it's against the health? Would we have to then defer to that? Are they deciding for us? How do we hold it to be fair?
No, I think, you know, this, and, you know, this language, again, is, um, I didn't reinvent the wheel. It, it, the thing is, it is very difficult to deny a site plan, and really, the reason why you deny it is they don't have adequate information, and they're not willing to, to entertain any additional information to provide to the board, but at the same time, that the use is...
I mean, if they're approved, we just, we don't have to, we don't really need that end there, unless it's so contrary to health, safety.
Well, I think this gives a cover to the planning board. If the planning board, in its decision, were to deny a site plan, there better be a good reason why you're denying it, and if that reason is because, for, for instance, it's, it's a, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to think of something that you, the planning board could deny. I've never heard of a site plan denial. Um, but let's say, because usually what would end up happening is then there would be a policy change by the board. That would be a bylaw amendment, right? I mean, the language is there, I think, is to suggest that to the applicant, that you better, you know, be bringing something that is compliant with zoning and the criteria that you've set for what is mostly commercial development, um, non-residential development. You know, if that language is troublesome, you can remove it. I don't think it changes the intent of the bylaw, um, but I think that's just additional language that may have been included to suggest that the planning board may have an additional reason why they could deny a, a site plan.
Is there, um, an end date for site plan approvals, special permits? Are they only good for a certain length of time, or...
Site plan approval, um, I'm trying to think, I don't, I guess if the planning, if the, if the board or the town wanted to create that criteria, it usually is the life of that particular use. So, um, we had this question, I think, when we were looking at the bikes, right? The bike store, um, which was an allowed use. I can't recall, did we go through a site plan approval process? I don't remember. But if you had a new use or a new, uh, expansion of the building, you would, of someone, of an entity that was not the original permittee, you would need to come before the board to get a new site plan approval. So if you were, like, for instance, at Oz, that building that got the extension, that needed a site plan approval because there was an expansion. But if it happened to be someone else, they would still need to get a site plan approval. Um, I don't know if that's a perfect example, but, um...
Well, we just did site plan approval for AJ's. It was in its existing use, just wanted to add those five, basically five parking places.
Yeah, so I, I think the way that you have the bylaw, um, how it addresses non-resident development and the, the need for special site plan approval, is that if there's any change in use, um, that is still compliant with the zoning, it's an allowed use, um, or if there's an expansion, that you would need to come. So if it's Dunkin' Donuts still operating, if Dunkin' Donuts five years down the road, you're not going to ask them to come in for a site plan approval, unless they're changing parking or expanding their building. The planning board can also have the ability to waive, um, if they didn't think, you know, it needed to go through a site plan approval process.
I just have a question, if they still approve, because anyway, why doesn't that be, why does by majority vote ownership instead of the amendment? I'm just wondering.
My, the comment that I made earlier was because, and I don't, because it's not based on any state law where it spells out what the approval for a zoning bylaw amendment or a, um, a special permit requires a super majority. Because this is a regular meeting item, like an agenda item, just like how you approve your minutes, just how you approve your A and Rs, um, that only requires majority vote, and I think that's based on Robert's rule. So, um, I think that's why it's being, being handled that way.
So as opposed to a public hearing?
Right.
So that's a second difference. On my, my other thought there was the, for any sort of end date for one of these, we have, in the past, approved a site plan, and nothing was done, even to this day, so has, and I thought there was, we had put, this expires after two years or something.
I think that's, I didn't change that, I don't think that's changed. Um, oh, yeah, so under enforcement, was the six point three six, any special, or, any special permit with site plan approval, that would need to change. Issued under this section shall last within one year.
Okay, so there's, there is a...
So I'm actually going to be removing that special permit language. So any site plan approval issued under this section.
So enforcement is out entirely?
No, he's going to remove, because we're talking about site plan approval, he's going to remove from this line, special permit, is that...
Yes. But, so it will read, any site plan approval issued under this section shall last within one year, if substantial use has not commenced.
So you're going to change the special permit then, too, to...
The special permit, um...
Let's see where it's...
I think, the thing is, special permits are covered under the state act, and that, I think is, I think that recently changed two years. But I don't think your special permit section is specific. Yeah, all special permits that have no time restrictions imposed by the special permit granting authorities shall last within two years from the date, unless substantial use or construction has commenced.
So it's a state law?
That's a state law, yeah.
So there is a two-year limit, so...
For a special permit.
For just a special permit?
Yeah. And more than likely, because your approval of a special permit would also be happening with a site plan approval, it would...
So kind of hand and answer. So is this going to change from one year to two then?
No, because this is specific to site plan, as an allowed use.
He's going to remove...
You're going to remove special permit on that wording?
Yeah.
Okay, on number two? Well, you've got any special permit with site plan approval, so you're just going to say any...
Any site plan approval.
Site plan approval. I get it, okay. You get that?
Yeah.
And that's all we have for changes?
I think so.
We have any cleanup in any of the...
I don't have, I, I mean, there, there was that discussion that I think we had that we brought up.
Get yours.
And this, this will probably be something for, um, a future, like overhaul of the bylaw. Um, I think that the board is covered with regards to that conflict that we may have identified when we were talking about medical offices in a certain district, I remember this permit, um, two years, three years ago. It was specific to a certain overlay district, um, that, that language fell within the overlay district, so it should have been specific to that. It's not very, I mean, it's not clear, but that is specific to that section, so that's been applied in that situation. That would be a recommendation to clean up how, how criteria is presented throughout the entirety of the bylaw, um, and then... the entirety of the bylaw, and that may be a future, you know, project for the board, getting some grant money to review the bylaw.
So nothing else that we, well, that's good, that's not very many, and hopefully the select board won't say, oop, that's too many, we don't have time. So are you going to contact Kathy when she gets back, next week, I'm assuming?
So what I will do is change the language of the, as private event venue, to include some of those additional considerations in the memo to the select board, and then that small fix for a site plan approval, add a definition regarding the agricultural silver-
S T G U?
Yes, S T G U, in that particular section, and put that into the memo. I believe the board is meeting on the 14th, because I have a meeting with them, so, well...
Yeah, we're meeting on the 14th, yeah.
Yeah.
That's our next meeting. Nope.
If, if the board is okay, so, is the board okay with me, with those changes, giving that to Kathy, so she can forward that to the board?
I am.
Do we have to vote on that, then?
I don't, I don't think you do.
We haven't voted on any of the stuff.
No.
I'd say let's just go with it, and, or do, what we can, what we can say is, we can take a vote to authorize Ken to make the changes, forward them to Kathy. Is that what you're?
Yeah, because we don't, there's nothing that says, hey, we approve of all these, and-
Right. We're just giving Ken the authorization to move forward as discussed.
And then also, with that schedule of public hearing? So I have to get that in the paper.
So let's see if I got this straight. I'll make the motion for Ken to make the changes as noted to the proposed, I should be writing this, to the proposed bylaw, zoning and bylaw changes. It's just bylaw? Not zoning?
Oh, the zoning bylaw.
Well, we'll put zoning and bylaw changes. To make the changes as noted, and submit to Kathy Leonard for, it has to go to the select board, for the select board to say yes. For select board review. Okay, so here's my motion. Motion for Ken to make changes as noted to the proposed zoning and bylaws, make changes as noted to the proposed bylaw, and submit to Kathy Leonard for select board review. Does that make sense?
I honestly think you can leave out Kathy Leonard.
To submit?
For select and review.
Okay, to submit for select board review. Does that make sense? One out of four time, or?
I'm good.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
We just dumped everything on you, Ken.
Just one more thing before the board adjourns, an update with regards to the MVP grant. I don't know if the board has taken a look, I know Bob shared his thoughts with regards to the survey, I talked about it at the last meeting. But that is just a supplemental component to the overall work that PVPC is doing on the update to the master plan. There will be a forthcoming presentation on what those changes are, as well as a presentation on possible regulatory review for the board to explore in the future.
And this won't be before the May meeting, so we couldn't include anything in there?
No.
So it'll be after the May meeting that we'll hear something?
It may be after your public hearing.
Okay.
But-
When is the public hearing?
The, the public hearing for the zoning bylaw.
Oh, for ours, okay.
Maybe, maybe items in April.
Okay, but the presentation to the board? Anytime soon?
I don't foresee it in March, maybe the first meeting in April, I'll ask the chair to have both of those on there.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't have anything.
Do I make a motion?
I'll make a motion for a jury.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.